Good evening, everyone. It is 5:34, so we will go ahead and get rolling. Aaron and Chris are excused from this evening's meeting for work travel reasons, so I will be the convener of the meeting this evening. And we will be able to take all votes and actions in person. Nobody's dialed in online. So with that, I will call this meeting to order. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors at the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I would ask the superintendent to confirm that today's meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Our first official item on the agenda tonight is to approve our agenda. I would ask that we make one minor change to the agenda, not in terms of order, but at the moment I have 13 public participant comment cards. So I would ask that, following the precedent that we established at the last board meeting, that we would waive item number one under Policy 187 that limits public participation to 30 minutes, that we will instead stick to the standard three minutes per participant, but we will hear all people that have registered to speak. So if I could have a motion for such.
I'll move for that motion, please.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Toni. All in favor of adjusting the public participation portion, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? All right, thank you. So with that, then, I will take a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Nancy. Let's approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? All right, we have an agenda. Thank you. So that then brings us to our public participation. So let me get the appropriate preamble here. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures of this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name, address in relation to the district. Actually, tonight, for the sake of time, we're going to suspend the address component. Everything has been registered on the comment cards, so we do have proper documentation, but for the sake of time, we will skip the address portion. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as they guarantee a fair and timely response. So, moving forward, again, for the sake of time, we'll do like we did last week, where we'll do the speaker and then the person that's on deck. So if you can kind of come up and just keep a steady flow of participants. Again, name, relationship to the district, your topic, you'll have three minutes. Lenny will run the timer. You'll see when the time is out, and we'd ask that you would complete your statement at that point in time. And again, for the sake of time for everybody, if your comment has been addressed by a prior speaker, please just acknowledge that and yield your time back, and we'll continue on. So, to get us started this evening, participant number one is Jenny Thompson, and then on deck will be Chris Thompson. So then when Jenny finishes, I will invite Chris up and we'll announce who is on deck at that point.
Hi, my name is Jenny Thompson. I'm a parent of two in the district. My address has been provided. Tonight, I will speak to you about Castle SEL, which, when I looked at all the teacher and student lessons at the district offices, is listed on almost all the lessons. It's called Castle Core Competencies. I looked up who the West Bend School District has paid for SEL lessons. What I found is that all of the companies we paid are also using Castle Core Competencies to teach SEL. Second Step, Committee for Children, Aperture Education, and Purpose Prep all use Castle. Well, why does that matter? Well, let me walk you through the problems with basing the entirety of our SEL curriculum on Castle. The president and CEO of Castle, Karen Neamy, announced that Castle has revised its definition and framework for SEL to highlight the value of SEL as a weapon for social justice. In a 2020 webinar, Karen Neamy also was quoted as saying, "SEL should be used to favor certain students over others, primarily because of their race," end quote. Under SEL competencies, on the Castle website, it states SEL competencies can be a leverage to develop justice-oriented global citizens. It goes on to add that programs will involve getting children to, quote, "assess power dynamics and confront issues of race and class across different settings," end quote. On Castle's website, it states, under Castle's standard framework, that Castle is, quote, "aimed at redistributing power to promote social justice." It also states that, under their section of cultural analysis, quote, "make explicit issues such as power, privilege, prejudice, discrimination, and social justice a part of SEL," end quote. With all the racially charged fights happening in the high school lately, do you really think it's going to get better teaching these things? The answer is no. It's only going to get worse. Kids at these ages are not emotionally mature enough to handle adult issues. The high school fights have proven me right. Just a week ago, I went to the district and read the teacher-student lessons for SEL. Do you know what I found? In the seventh grade lesson, Unit Two, the teacher is to ask the students in multiple lessons to rate something. We would normally use a one to five range, but not in these lessons. They are asked to put a fist in the air if they don't agree with the statements the teacher reads. A fist. Do you know who also puts a fist in the air? Marxists, communists, and BLM. I have pictures here to show you proof. And do you support this? Because by allowing SEL to be taught in Badger, what you're telling West Bend parents is that you not only approve this, but you support it. Part of the Second Step copyright states that you are not allowed to edit or change anything in the lessons. I have a copy of that for everyone as well. So everything in the SEL lessons, they have to stay. They are not able to be removed or altered. No crossing out a website we don't want taught, no telling teachers that we can't say something. It will all get taught. I do not feel safe with my children going to the school anymore unless the board takes decisive action to remove SEL in an emergency meeting. If you have the power to make parents and kids feel safe again in our schools, and when something bad happens because of SEL teaching, like the BML fights today, whose fault will it be? It won't be mine.
Next up is Chris Thompson, and on deck is Leanna Dranzo.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me time to speak to you this evening. My name is Chris Thompson, and I am a resident of West Bend. My address has been given, and I have two children in the school district. I attended this board meeting last week, and I watched the rest online, and I heard numerous concerned parents and citizens of the district share their findings about SEL and ask the board to remove it from their curriculum. There are parents who sacrificed countless -- these are parents who sacrificed countless hours of their lives outside of their jobs and family responsibilities to bring these facts to your attention. They sat in the district offices poring over curriculum. They sat in on curriculum meetings and held numerous conversations with district officials to lay out their concerns. I listened as a member of the board dismissed these concerns last week, stating that, quote, "there wasn't an ounce of CRT, as you'd hear about it on Fox News," end quote, as if it were just that simple. Well, I don't watch Fox News. But I can tell you that after doing just a small bit of cursory research on the castle.org site, it was clear to me that the underpinnings of this curriculum are rooted in the same poisonous ideological precepts as Black Lives Matter, a self-proclaimed Marxist organization. Buzzwords such as "social justice," "equity," and "privilege" are littered throughout the source documents, research articles, and reference resources that make up the foundations of this curriculum. This is a divisive ideology, far from being settled science, and it is far too volatile for our young people to be able to process in a constructive way without direct parental guidance, and I can prove it. Just look at the fruits of what this has produced over the last two successive school days. On Friday last week, the high school was placed on a hold. That's a lockdown without a threat of danger, due to a student who decided to incite a Black Lives Matter protest in the middle of the school day. Just this morning, more West Bend police officers had to respond to the high school again to break up a fight stemming from a student who objected to the protest last week. I know this because my child knows this, and because videos and conversations and commentary have been circulating all over social media since last week. You say that these programs teach values such as empathy and compassion, but I'm here tonight to inform you that you do not have the right nor the authority to be teaching any kind of values to my children. That is not your role. It's mine as a parent, and I take it very seriously. Moreover, the decisions that have led to this curriculum being used in our district today leave me with serious concerns about your ability to ensure my children's safety during the school day. Last week, one board member commented that we should have this much parent turnout for every meeting. Well, maybe she has a point, but I would submit to you that, at least in part, attendance at these meetings has been light because you have been entrusted by your constituents to watch and protect this district from harmful policies being put into place. I'm here to tell you that this trust has now been broken. If this board does not get serious and seek to make decisive action right now with regards to racially charged ideology existing within our curriculum today, I fear these problems will continue to escalate. This is not the reputation we want for our community. Please hear our requests and make the responsible decision to have this removed from our curriculum. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Next up is Leanna Dranzo, and on deck is Karine Freund.
My name is Leanna Dranzo, and I have a son in the district. I stand before this board again today out of deep concern for not only our child, but every child within this district. A mass email was sent out Friday regarding an explosive political incident in our high schools. The email downplays this incident to the point of blatant misrepresentation of the truth. The entire cafe and portions of hallway were in complete racially charged uproar, food flying with the chaos escalating between our children, to the point of teachers having to form a wall to separate them. This was chaos. These kids were at each other's throats. Now, that sure doesn't sound like a minor tiff or silent protest to me. The video erupted -- the violence erupted full force today to vicious assault on children who would not participate in the Friday protest. This isn't about black, white, tan, or brown. This is about the equity training in SEL this district is teaching to all our beautiful children? It is divisive, biased, radically left Marxism designed to further alienate our American children from each other. Anyone else? Anyone else heartbroken over this loss of the West Bend School District as a safe and healthy place for all of our children to learn? Because I sure am. That trust that we had has been absolutely destroyed. This is the fruits of this radical Marxist curriculum being brought into this district. Slap whatever feel-good terminology you want on it, it's still Marxism. It will breed only more division and violence. And unless that's the ultimate goal, why is this district fighting tooth and nail to implement it? Our group of parents has respectfully and diplomatically tried to work with you to even get this curriculum paused. What undergoes further analysis? Yet this district disregarded hundreds of emails, concerns, discussions, requests from parents, and moved full steam ahead. Last week, global studies saturated our children in extremely sensitive and potentially explosive topics of George Floyd, BLM, and Taliban sympathies. You thought this was wisdom. The most traumatic, divisive, and explosive current events possible, all crammed into the second full week of school? Really? The agenda is showing. Do not mistake the parents in this community as fools. Even a simple, blue-collar folk recognize communism when we see it. I will give you wordsmiths credit of hiding it well with deceptive language and fluid doublespeak, but I'm here speaking to remind everyone in this room that this is still America, one nation, under God, indivisible, and in this land, "commie" is still a dirty word. After so much deception, radical politics, and eruptions of violence, we are pulling our son today from this school district. Who will be taking responsibility?
Thank you, Leanna. Next up is Karine Freund, and on deck is Rick Gundrum.
My name is Karine Freund, and I have a child in the West Bend School District. A rainbow of colors and soft-spoken words tucked into a beautiful chart. Who would disagree with this presentation? That is exactly what Jen Wimmer sent out to every parent in the WBSD explaining SEL. It looks beautiful, the chart, and filled with valuable lessons on its cover. A great political play. This misguided chart does not represent the actual lessons being taught. For example, one lesson in SEL eighth grade states, "social factors, power and privilege. Some experience privileged based on their race, gender, class, popularity, or physical power in a situation. People don't often stand up to those with more power. Social factors that contribute to bullying and harassment. Do you recall those? The answer is power and privilege stereotype and assumption. Two strategies we'll look at today are speaking up and starting movement. Using these strategies can help you disrupt the social and environmental factors. Today, we are going to create a plan for disrupting factors. Step one, stand up for change. Step two, identify factors that need disrupting. Step three, identify specific disruption strategies. Four, explain details of disruption strategy. Five, identify others to put plan in place. These are the same steps that BML and Antifa use. You are educating our children in activism with the cover of anti-bullying. This is only one lesson in an entire year's worth of SEL. I have reviewed them and emailed my concerns to all of you, but have any of you taken the time to review the lessons yourself? Through discussions with Wisconsin State Representatives, I have found that 28 states have introduced legislation banning SEL programs and programs like this. 12 states have already passed legislation into law by governor's signature or Board of Education. 11 states, including Wisconsin, have 21 bills pending legislation in progress. Three bills in Wisconsin, all supported by the Washington County Board of Representatives. Our federal government has nine bills pending regarding SEL removal. If SEL is so wonderful, like your little charts you presented to the school district, then why is all this legislation in play? WBSD is ranked 175 out of 370 school districts in Wisconsin, lowest in Washington County. We boast a 48% proficiency in reading and 45 in mathematics. I have a strong opinion as a parent that our educators should be focusing on how to fix these statistics instead of how to bring equity in social-emotional learning. Stop teaching SEL in Badger and High School and take emergency action to remove it now. You are causing harm to our children. It is not safe in our schools. My son got beat up last week in your school district, and I am tired of it.
Thank you, Karine. Next up is Rick Gundrum, and on deck is Dennis Kelling.
Thank you for letting me speak this evening. I am Rick Gundrum. I come before you today as your state representative because I am deeply concerned with the way our children are being indoctrinated with critical race theory, SEL, or any form thereof in our schools. Marxist indoctrination has been around for 40 years, beginning in universities and the workplace. Now, it has found its way into our local K-12 schools. An issue took place on Friday inside this school that was reported as a protest. It doesn't matter what they were protesting. What matters is that students feel they can protest in the halls of the school during class time. Parents have found being disruptive or an activist is part of what is being taught in SEL. I am not surprised it's being accepted by school boards in larger cities and more liberal parts of the state, but I can't believe that it would be accepted right here in the West Bend community. This is troubling because parents don't want it being taught in their schools. I know this may be new to you, but as a member of the school board, you need to take these concerns seriously. SRT, Second Step, SEL, and Castle need to be removed from the curriculum. Teachers should be held responsible if they decide on their own to weave these ideologies into their academic teaching plan, and that includes study hall. As a school board, you have the authority to prevent these teachings and ideologies from being woven into the curricular fabric of the education for our students. Don't forget, not too long ago, public school boards took all religious references out of their schools for fear they might get sued by parents who don't want their children indoctrinated with religious beliefs that differ from their own. Now, many of those same school boards are fine with allowing racial disparity, inclusion, equity, and diversion training, which are components of Marxism, and they are allowing it to go on in the classroom. I'm here to tell you that the legislature is taking action because parents are being ignored, ignored by school boards across the entire state and in many states across the country. The legislation that is making its way through both houses in Madison right now gives parents, students, and employees a pathway to make their voices heard. It gives them transparency. At the time I was working on this legislation, I never thought it would be necessary to have that in effect for West Bend. Let's concentrate on academics, not Marxist socialistic ideologies. Those discussions can take place outside the school, away from the campus. The most important reason CRT, Second Step, SEL, and Castle need to be removed from the school is because parents don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next up is Dennis Kelling, and on deck is Maureen Martin.
Thank you. My name is Dennis Kelling. I am a resident of West Bend. I have two students that went through West Bend Schools. I am the District Six County Supervisor, and I am Vice Chairman of the County Board. I have spoken to you back when we did the school referendum. You probably remember me as the crazy man who went off on you. I am not going to do that tonight. I've grown politically, a lot. So I'm going to state a few simple facts. With only three minutes, I have to be a little blunt, and I apologize for that. It's not meant to be something severe, it's just the way it is. Like you, I am a representative of the people, and I respect that you are representatives of the people, and you were elected to your position. Right now, we have a couple of topics that the people of this city disagree with. First, masking, which we're not really discussing a lot tonight, but know that the people are against it. Vaccines, which, again, we're not really discussing, but the people are against it. Mostly, we're talking about CRT, SEL, Castle, and whatever name you want to give to it. As you can see, the people here representing a group that I've come to know, a good bunch of people, they are against this. The Republican Party, I met with them back on Saturday night, it was quite the topic of conversation. Common-sense citizens of West Bend, it was quite the conversation with them as well. It seems overwhelmingly, the people of West Bend are against this a lot. As a community leader, I want you to know that these people are not just a disorganized bunch, they've got me. They've got Rick, and we're going to help them. And one of the ways we're going to help them is we're going to demand that you take away this CRT and SEL, remove it from the curriculum immediately. Okay? If that's not done, then we'll use the election process, do it the right way, as we do, to remove whoever we have to. Now, Paul Fisher does not represent our community, I feel. He does not represent our point of view, and we will put somebody up against him. And I want you to know that these people out here, these are the volunteers that are going to be knocking doors, and these are the people who will be dropping lit. These are going to be the people that'll go against you. And I want the rest of the board members, this is not meant to be a threat, this is not what I'm after. I'm just letting you know, the community is against this. If you don't represent the community, you got to go. Okay? It's as simple as that, and we're going to make sure of it, all right? Who's going to volunteer? Okay. I guarantee you, they'll have plenty of money and plenty of volunteer ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Next up is Maureen Martin, and on deck is Carol Hager.
My name is the Reverend Maureen Martin. I am the rector of St. James Episcopal Church here in West Bend. I thank you for all of your hard work, and I pray for you. But I want to change the subject. I'm here today to report to the school board and these parents the impact of your mask policy on the children in my parish. Middle school children have told me that unmasked children corner them and tell them that they are going to hell for wearing a mask, and that those children with masks should kill themselves. Children as young as first grade in my parish are experiencing severe depression. Kids catching regular viruses are terrified that they are going to die, and worse, that they're going to infect their family members. Kids paralyzed with fear due to bullying are choosing to try the virtual program but suffering in loneliness and despair. Children are experiencing feelings that are not typically part of a normal childhood, and we will see repercussions for years from lack of masks in the schools. Children are experiencing despair, panic attacks. They're feeling the responsibility for the survival of loved ones, and their parents are concerned for the well-being of their children. There are children in my parish who have to wear masks in their own homes or hide in their rooms because of their own parents who have chronic diseases and cancer. Kids are experiencing school absence due to major anxiety system experiences and panic attacks at the beginning of the school day. They can't even make it to school. Families are already feeling stressed beyond their limit by multiple trips to get their kids COVID-tested, but they feel like they have no choice because virtual learning is not an appropriate modality for all children. Families are being forced to make bad economic decisions in order to keep their children You're doing a wonderful job. CRT is important. SEL is important. My question is, how is this outcome of just two weeks of school not a stain on the reputation of the school district? Many families report that virtual learning is not working for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Next up is Carol Hager, and on deck is Jody Geenan.
My name is Carol Hager, and I'm a West Bend taxpayer and parent of a graduate from West Bend Schools. By now, you've probably heard about critical race theory, CRT, and how school districts are denying that CRT is being taught in schools. They are saying CRT is a college-level theory and would never be discussed with children. They also changed the word so that CRT becomes culturally responsive teaching, social-emotional learning, social justice, equity, white privilege, the list goes on. Several local residents put together a Freedom of Information request over the summer, that's known as FOIA, to discover how ingrained CRT is in our district. Indeed, many West Bend School District teachers have attended multiple training classes and workshops over the last three years that focused on critical race topics. Some of the training was offered to all the staff. Some workshops were hours long, others consisted of several days of training. Teachers were paid to attend, and if they needed to attend the courses after regular school hours, they were paid additional compensation. Sometimes administrators attended. When we received documents from the FOIA, there was sometimes no syllabus or a flyer even describing what was to be covered in these training courses. To be honest, most of the training was paid for by a federal To be honest, most of the training was paid for by a federal Title IV grant, but it is your tax money at work. Here's a partial list of some of the training. Uncovering Our Bias with Behavior, that was done in 2018 to 2019. Courageous Conversations, where monthly staff meetings discussing topics such as equity and bias. Beyond Diversity, a two-day workshop. Critically Conscious Leadership, four days, led by two racial equity consultants who were paid $27,000. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, three days in July, just a couple months ago. Also provided as a result of the FOIA request was a document produced by district staff with a list of equity resources for teachers to read or view online, such as the article called "White Privilege: Unpacking the Invisible Knapsack," or YouTube, "The Moment I Understood White Privilege." If CRT or concepts such as racial injustice, systemic racism, equity, and white privilege are not being taught in our local classrooms, then why have the teachers been trained for at least the last three years in these very subjects? And now we hear about a type of current events quiz given in a high school global studies class that used biased language in discussing George Floyd's death. I suspect that this quiz was not even part of the standard curriculum because it included items that happened only months ago, such as the COVID Delta variant. I would like the administration to produce this quiz and explain its origin. How can we know what's being taught to our students if there is no transparency? Let's be honest, school board members and administrators, our students are being indoctrinated with a leftist political agenda.
Thank you, Carol. Next up is Jody Geenan, and on deck is Jamie Dutcher.
Hi, my name is Jody Geenan. As a candidate for the school board twice, I am very concerned about critical race theory, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and social emotional learning in our school district. First, the Second Step Social Emotional Learning Program and its affiliates do not align with policies and ethics of our community. In particular, the loveisrespect.org website seems designed to drive a wedge between kids and their parents. This is not a website that wants to instill kindness and empathy, it is a pornographic sex ed website for middle schoolers. The wedge, this site states, "What to Do If Your Parents Don't Approve." The porn, for starters, this site states, "Sex can be an important part of your relationship and a fun and gratifying activity for you and your partners," plural, "to enjoy together." This site also bashes our country without providing facts. It states that the United States is a country with broad existing inequities on the basis of race, gender, sexuality, ability, class, education, and any number of other identifications. It sounds like brainwashing on critical race theory oppression to me, instead of upholding equality for all that our constitution ensures. Why are we supporting companies that don't support our kids and parents? Why are we implementing Second Step in our middle school this year instead of demanding better? Second, regarding the recent incidents in our high school of Black Lives Matter protests and holds, could it be that our teacher trainings in critical race theory and diversity, equity, and inclusion play a big part? Preceding the protest was a loaded question on a current events quiz that may have inspired the events. Quote, "The killing of George Floyd on a Minneapolis corner led to national protests and a reckoning over racial injustice touching on virtually every aspect of American life." On June 25, the former police officer Derek Chauvin, who ignored Mr. Floyd's desperate cries for help and pressed his knee into Mr. Floyd's neck for over nine minutes, was sentenced to, where an answer is chosen. Even if the staff tried to upload all of their curriculum and resources to the district website, are we naive to think quizzes and tests will be uploaded so students can have access ahead of time? Do classroom discussions surround test questions? Jen Wimmer has conveyed to me that while students must be allowed to exercise their First Amendment rights to free speech about controversial issues, school district policies prohibit staff from engaging in these issues. That sounds rosy at first glance if we want teachers to avoid slanting discussions, especially considering the trainings many of them received in diversity, equity, and inclusion. But how does this ensure balance in what the class is hearing? What if the students with differing opinions or questions are afraid to exercise their First Amendment rights for fear of retaliation by peers or staff? And if they aren't afraid, how do we prevent it from exploding into a riot? School is for academics. It should not be a training grounds for protests and activism. It should not be a training grounds for illicit sexual activities and experiences. The schools are no longer safe with lockdowns and multiple fights and protests. Students and staff shouldn't be afraid or intimidated about attending school. Let's get back to the basics of fact-based education and end this craziness. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Next up is Jamie Dutcher, and on deck is Nicole Casper.
My name is Jamie Dutcher, and I'm going to read a few notes directly from the eighth grade SEL lesson. Lesson 25, Unit 4. Encourage the students to visit the following online organization, loveisrespect.org. Have students save their handouts, they will need them to complete Lesson 26. Upon entering the website, a large pop-up takes over the screen and states, "Heads up, your browser history can be monitored without your knowledge, and it can never be wiped completely. Think your internet use might be monitored? Call us." Remember to clear your history after visiting this website. You can quickly leave this website at any time by clicking the X in the top right or by pressing the escape key twice. The site has the following information. Keep in mind, this is for 13- to 14-year-old kids. Sex can be an important part of your relationship and an intimate way to express yourself, both physically and emotionally. It can also just be a fun and gratifying activity for you and your partners to enjoy together. Five tips for your first time. So you're thinking about having sex for the first time ever? Maybe you're feeling a bit nervous, maybe you have a lot of questions, like, what should I expect? What will it feel like? Will it be awkward? We get it. Having sex, whatever definition of sex might be for your first time can be a little intimidating, and it's totally normal to feel this way. You can live chat your questions to us. If you're having sex where pregnancy is a physical possibility, have a conversation with your partner. Planned Parenthood has great information on birth control options. Join the Love is Respect Youth Council. Are you between the ages of 13 and 26? Interesting in being a part of the Love is Respect work? Relationships look different depending on the community and cultural context you're living in, particularly in the United States, a country with broad existing inequities on this basis of race, gender, sexuality, ability, class, education, and a number of identifications. Many parents have brought up concern over this to Jen Wimmer. Her response was, "The webpage will have a line struck through it so teachers know not to teach," and that the site will be blocked from the district internet. I would like to remind Jen and the school board and every district parent, CASL Copyright states, "Any information in the text cannot be altered or edited, or you have a breach of copyright." Let that sink in. This cannot be blocked from being taught because of copyright. The whole program must be blocked from the school district. Remove SEL from Badger now.
Thank you, Jamie. Next up is Nicole Casper, and on deck is Melanie Ergot.
My name is Nicole Casper. I have a third grader and an eighth grader who I've already removed from the school district and is now homeschooling. Why is it okay to continue teaching something that parents don't want? There's been a decent number of parents speaking out for concerns with SEL at the board meetings. I know parents have been coming in and scanning through the curriculum, emailing principals, the supervisor, board members with concerns. Have there been any parents in favor of it? Just asking. I'm not seeing any support, so I'm asking if I'm missing something. If I'm missing anything, then why is there such a pushback against parents' concerns and wishes to have this program stopped? I honestly want to know. The job of raising our children is 100% our responsibility. It seems schools have forgotten that they only hold a piece of assisting us in raising our children, and that piece is with our permission as parents. We as parents have blindly trusted the school system to teach our children, and that is on us, but we see now. I watched the curriculum meeting last week, and I appreciate that the board members who were present did express that parents have had concerns, thank you for that. But I kept hearing that the school is being transparent and working with parents, but I am not seeing that. Just because you say the words doesn't make it so. We are being limited to what we see, timed with what we see, given generic outlines to pacify us, and a lot of pushback from trying to withhold our students from seeing the curriculum. That is not transparency, and that's not working with parents. For example, that vulgar website that they were talking about was addressed at that meeting, and it was just kind of pushed under the rug. That was brought to your attention by parents. No staff member investigated it or saw any red flags or concerns with that content. Parents did. How are we supposed to trust you with the curriculum if the truly disturbing information doesn't alert your curriculum advisors? They obviously are not researching the information that's being taught, or worse, they're just okay with it. So, I hope you can see that we're losing faith in our education system here. SEL focuses less on academics and more on student attributes, mindsets, values, and behaviors. These goals are ill-defined and raise significant questions about what attitudes should be promoted, who is deciding this, what if they don't align with our families or communities' values. Having a government vendor or an unqualified public school official implement curriculum based off a coffee table psychology is quite different than directing our own children's moral, ethical, and emotional developments. According to research from Pioneer Institute, students may suffer tangible harm from SEL assessments and evaluation. Research also concludes that there's no expert consensus on any of the definitions in SEL. There's contradictory, poor-quality research on its efficacy. There's mixed or negative research about supposed benefits, and by negative research, that's increased anxiety, depression, suicide.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up is Melanie Ergot, and on deck is Randy Markwart.
I'm here as a taxpayer and a parent of five. I have two children in the district right now. This whole CASL thing is new to me. I had not heard about it until recently, when I got the email home from, you know, the school district. And so I decided to do some little digging on my own and see what it's all about. And my concern is with the spiritual roots of the SEL and CASL. If you just go online and look it up, you can find, and I have gone and vetted this information, that the social and emotional learning was developed during a meeting held at the Fetzer Institute. One of the founders of the SEL movement, David Slaughter, served as president and CEO of this organization. Now, this organization is a new age institute that boldly proclaims that its primary mission is spiritual, supposedly aiming at helping a new, or build a new spiritual foundation for a loving world. It goes on to say that it is based on new occult age teachings of individuals such as Alice Bailey, who is a Lucifer Publishing Company founder, and other gurus of the new age faith. This particular institute where they go on to say that exploring personal and spiritual journeys to work toward transformed communities and societies is one of their goal. What better way to go after changing and transforming societies and communities than by going after our children? And each team member brings a unique spiritual and religious lens to inspire and serve a global movement. And this Alice Bailey, that is the founder here, she long expressed a special interest in the education of children, and she wrote a book called Educating in the New Age. And I just wanted to say, before making any decisions that impact our children, ask yourself, "Do I want to allow a controversial curriculum with spiritual roots in the secular classroom? Would you be okay knowing that your children are being taught a curriculum with roots in another religion that goes against your family's values? This curriculum looks innocent enough on the surface, but digging a little deeper only reveals a wolf in sheep's clothing." Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. And Randy is the last card that I have. Jen, Roush, have we gotten any more cards in the back? Nothing? Okay. Randy will be our final speaker this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. Randy Markwart, taxpayer, parent of three former grads and three current, grandparent of three current students. You know, I've sat on your side of the dais before, and I'm currently a county board supervisor. I knew there'd be plenty of examples specifically tonight of what's going on in the schools, but I wanted to basically remind you of your duties as board members. And I brought with me the Chapter 118 of our state statutes. I'll read and comment on a couple of those. For one, it says, "The effective operation of the public schools is dependent upon a common understanding of what public schools should be and do." I fear that we're losing the common understanding part. Each school board should provide curriculum course requirements and instruction consistent with the goals and expectations established under these statutes. Parents and guardians of pupils enrolled in the school district share with the state and school board the responsibility for pupils meeting the goals and expectations under this subchapter. That means you, as a board, and as the district administration, do not dictate to the parents the specifics or the interpretation of what this entails. It says, one of the things that children should learn, "Appreciation and understanding of different value systems and cultures." That's fine, depending on how you interpret that. I question, is conservatism or traditional values still part of that different value system? It says, "The skills needed to cope with social change." Note the word "cope," not "cause to change," not "become activist." That's not part of this. They should develop a knowledge of morality and the individual responsibilities of social being, and in this, it references our state constitution. In another part, we've heard several examples tonight of sexual education that has crept into the SEL. Well, there is a specific statute that deals with human growth and development, and it says, "This purpose is to foster a partnership," again, collaboration between you, between parents and pupils of attending schools in the school district and the schools in the district. You apparently are not following that and holding that under the guide of the Human Growth and Development Curriculum, and that is the one place where distribution of curriculum to parents is specifically stated and enforced. And my hope is that, under Representative Gundrym's leadership and others in the Republican Legislature, that that kind of curriculum transparency is forced upon you because you are absolutely trying to obfuscate on many of these issues and not sharing that with our parents of what's going on in these schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Again, thanks to each of our public speakers for taking the time to put your thoughts down and come and say a lot in your three-minute allocation. I would invite you, if you want to leave, you're free to leave. We have our Consent Agenda item, but following Consent Agenda is the superintendent's report, and I'm sure Superintendent Wimmer will be giving us an update on some of these topics as well. So, if you'd like to stick around, you're certainly welcome to sit through the next item until we get to the report.
... so I would prefer that people stay for that.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Toni. Toni just reminded me that also, following the superintendent's report, we have a curriculum committee meeting report from the meeting that was held last Tuesday, September 7th, so you may want to stick for that as well. So, with that, we move to the Consent Agenda portion of tonight's agenda. So, on the Consent Agenda, we have the minutes of the August 23 regular board meeting, minutes of the August 30 special board meeting, dispersments posted through September 13th, ratification of certified staff contracts, which we have none, ratification of support staff contracts, we have one contract to approve, certified staff resignations, we have one resignation with the transfer to the new position, and then no retirements to address today. So, with that, I would ask if we have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Nancy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Any further discussion on the Consent Agenda?
I just want to point out a topic, just because probably everybody has not reviewed the Consent Agenda. In here are dispersments and new contracts, and I just maybe point out to... In here are dispersments and new contracts, and I just maybe point out to the board and people listening that we have been very conscious of the budget and taxpayer dollars. We were under budget for last year, and we're in this new fiscal year, and things are going very well. And I just thought I'd say that. On the financial side, it's part of this consent agenda, dispersments posted, that's us paying all our bills. So I just want to mention that to everyone before I vote.
Thank you, Herr. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Now we move to our reports section. Superintendent Wimmer.
Thank you. The board, in response to community feedback that we've heard, the topic of social-emotional learning is front and center. They have made sure to have that included on several agendas. I know myself and several staff members are just leaning into the feedback that you're providing so that we can look at it to review, revise, and potentially remove. That will come through the committee structure. At any time, any family can opt out of any lesson, just reach out to the principal. Again, I can hear you, and I can see that that process is moving slowly for your liking. The committee is going to hear that at their October meeting. We have an open house September 18th from 9:00 to 10:00, where anyone can come in. We'll log you into that online portal so you can see materials for yourselves. Again, the feedback is important as we review that. Tonight, there was several mentions of a video that is part of recommendation from Second Step that's blocked for use in our district, and receiving feedback from community members, instead of doing a strike-through and pushing that out publicly and noting that, we didn't want to call attention to that video in any more way or have people kind of intrigued by that to go look at it. So we did not publish that in any way, but it is blocked by our filters, just so people have that assurance. And again, Ms. Schmidt will provide a further update from the last committee meeting, and know that'll come forward at several committee meetings as well. And then they've also chosen to bring that to the full board. So I'll let her give that larger report, but I just wanted to speak about that this evening. Also, just letting the board know that the White House issued updated COVID plan September 9th entitled Path Out of the Pandemic. People were wondering what that meant as large employers. Were we considered a large employer? And that talks about vaccination or weekly testing for staff members. And again, that is looking at private employers or federal programs. We are working with our legal counsel, we're convening as regional superintendents, state agencies, to understand what implication that might have for Head Start, that is a federally subsidized program. So we're looking to understand, again, do we need to put in testing opportunities, et cetera? We've alerted our staff that we're aware, we're working through it, hold tight, there is no change in practice at this time. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that and how we were navigating that. Again, no change in our practice. We provide time for staff should they choose to pursue vaccination, but it's not something we ask them or require of them to do. I attended, I wanted to give a shout-out to East High School. I attended their football game on Friday. You know that when the students roll in with a karaoke machine, that they mean business. So it was a really great crowd. We had talked with some community members around, sometimes our younger students, even though they're free, they might not have an ID, that kind of thing, and we talked about, what a great, family-friendly event, and having two high schools, one campus. We're afforded the opportunity to have a home game every Friday night, welcome our middle schoolers, others. So again, we're making sure that all of our games are free for anyone 12 and under. That would include anyone in the community, the opposing team. We're welcoming our families, certainly, you know, our opposing team, et cetera, are paying for that event, but it's a wonderful family event. I would encourage anyone to attend. So just a note around that. I know we had some live performance of our American anthem, singing of the national anthem, and looking to have our younger students come and perform as part of their music program as well. So again, that was another feedback from a community member, and just a great idea. So I would encourage people to attend our Friday night events, or any event. We have several in season. Speaking of, I went to our Trail Sharks on Sunday. They competed. That is, it was amazing. If you're not familiar, the local event was at Manuka Park in Waukesha. Our staff here oversee that. It's a countywide program for Trail Sharks mountain biking. People were camped out all weekend and participating. So it was just amazing, and again, sometimes our size affords us the ability to co-op teams and welcome students from other schools and districts, so that was lovely to see as well. And then one of the other larger pieces of concern was to make sure that we were updating the board on our COVID mitigation. Recall that we started the year with a phased approach that was really looking at local data. I want to make sure that our public understands that's not that we're not looking at our public and community data as well, but sometimes our local data affords us the ability to act quickly. It also provides a different picture. So when you're looking at, for example, the community dashboard, it would say, "We're still a high burden," but we like to unpack those numbers because that range of highs is really large. It also shows a trajectory of decreasing. However, we know when we unpack numbers every single week with our public health that the student age cases are increasing. So again, receiving data every single day, looking at it, we see no need to shift our metrics that we're using, again, I think, to that hot topic of face coverings. That is a phase in mitigation, so we might use intermittent masking. But I just wanted everyone to realize that we're looking at, working with public health. We look at things like hospital census beds, they're still doing elective procedures, we haven't felt that tightness. At any given time, they might be short in some beds in certain areas, but that is another measure that we look at every single week. I just want to update regarding the phases. Prior to school starting, we did have one program. Again, we made a commitment to look at program, classroom, maybe house or school level in that data to just move quickly, to keep us solidly in Phase 1, which everyone is experiencing now. We had one program prior to that school year that we moved into Phase 4, that sunset on Friday, and we were able to be responsive there. We had one elementary school that we sent kind of a foreshadowing letter saying, "We're monitoring illness in, at the classroom level." We also made sure the school was aware that there was kind of that, hey, we're looking at this. Those numbers came right back down into ranges. We didn't have to change phases at all. And I know that sometimes the data, we do a daily dashboard for all of our families, and there's some data that we cannot report publicly. So when people wonder about cases, well, we're looking at transmission, we're looking at illness, and what are we allowed to report publicly? So out of our almost, we're just shy of 6,000 students, we've had 15 investigations at schools. No school has had, everyone's remained under five investigations per school. 129 students were identified as close contacts, and as we monitor them, no additional illness resulted with those students. So again, we're monitoring very closely. We moved swiftly to add layers of mitigation. That one class we were monitoring, we made some adjustments in schedules. Around 195 students have participated in what we would term distance learning. So many students have a case within their home, so a reported case of COVID in their home. We require quarantine, so they've participated in distance learning in some form or fashion. That could range from a half-day, it could be multiple days. We are just reporting the number of students impacted. Out of our staff since September 1st, we've had seven reported cases and 17 staff members quarantining again for potential, a positive case in their home, et cetera. So again, we're still holding with our metrics. I know that we said we will consistently monitor, work with public health, should we need to review or revise those in any way. I have no recommendation for those revisions. We continue to monitor very closely, all the way down to the classroom or program level to move swiftly should we need it. Any questions regarding mitigation, numbers, et cetera?
Ms. Wimmer, could you speak to the fact of, I'm now, I might be speaking out of turn here, but I believe in every school, we have some type of guidance counselor or someone like that. Should someone, should a student feel that they're being bullied for mask-wearing or not mask-wearing? There are certain steps that they could take to alert staff member or a guidance counselor or someone to that. So could you just maybe, for the people listening at home, because I would hate to think that parents don't understand that we certainly have a very strong bullying policy in place, and I'd like to hear about that more.
Sure, especially given public comment this evening around students' choices, et cetera. We work to create an environment where everyone's choices are respected. Not only do you have your classroom teachers, your principal, guidance counselors, school psychologists, and oftentimes, kids have relationships with different staff members. Maybe it's, you know, an art teacher, or a PE teacher, someone where they can confide in. If they're confiding, maybe in their home with clergy, et cetera, in other spaces, we would ask that people just simply connect to us to make sure that we are also aware and can help support that child, and also address students that need to be addressed with behaviors that we would not find acceptable. We wouldn't find that acceptable for anyone to be made fun of for their personal choices. Thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent?
I have a question. Prior to COVID, as a district, and I know you weren't here before that, can I assume that we had a way to measure and determine when a certain number of absences in the school would trigger a closure of school? And the reason why I ask this is because there are some people in our community that think that this is all brand-new, as far as having steps in place for when, I mean, there could be a flu outbreak, and if 20% of the students were absent or staff, then the school would be closed. Is that correct?
Sure, any kind of illness. Generally, you might see it come through an elementary school, norovirus, things like that. You're really reaching out, you monitor pre-pandemic, we've always monitored attendance, we ask for, you declare. We have several different codes, so we're understanding if it's truly illness. We even ask around symptoms, et cetera, so we can monitor closely. We can alert families, hey, we're starting to see kids get, you know, fevers or this or that, you know, just to create that diligence in that monitoring. Because again, people keeping kids who don't feel well home, I think, is really been impactful for us. That has always been right around that 15% to 20% mark, depending on what symptoms that you see, but at 20%, you are looking at closure. You've been reaching out to public health, they might be monitoring your attendance every single day from really around that 15% to 20% range. You're looking at those protocols. I've been in districts where we've come right up against that line, and I've supported districts who all of a sudden hit that wall and hit it very quickly with a sudden onset of a norovirus, and just having to close it down midday in support and provide supplementary staff to a neighboring district. So that, those have always been in place.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that just because we have plans doesn't mean we ever hope to use them, just like we have plans for evacuation for a fire, or, I mean, that would probably be the most similar. I mean, it was brought to my attention that this was a way to, I mean, we're not mandating masks, we're not mandating the vaccine. We have a plan in place in case COVID does do the worst thing possible, but that's because it's our responsibility as a district to have a plan.
Absolutely. We hope that, and I would call our efforts, you know, pretty successful compared to many, again, we didn't have any wide-scale closure. We had some intermittent of 4K classrooms because the little ones, there was, there's no illusion of spacing or anything of that nature with the little ones. But we didn't have to experience the closures and things like that. We tried to move proactively. We're, again, trying to do that now and monitor very closely down to that classroom level to avoid movement to those phases. But we do have multiple phases to move through as needed, and we'll continue to monitor that throughout.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, superintendent. So moving on to the curriculum committee, Erin Dove, our chair, is, again, excused this evening, so standing in for the report will be Toni Schmidt.
Thank you. A lot has happened since the September 7th meeting. The board, in response to citizen question and comments, intentionally placed social and emotional learning as its only topic of discussion at the September 7th meeting. For those interested in reviewing that, a video of the meeting is linked online, and social and emotional learning lessons can be found on our website. As part of our response, we are changing the social-emotional lessons as a district curriculum, which means that a team will review, revise, or remove lessons after feedback and review. And previously, this was not the case. This is a change because we are responding to the concerns of the community. The following information was shared in the district newsletter for all families to understand the board's process and timeline, and that's key. I'm really grateful for all the public comment tonight. I especially appreciate the quotes on the actual Cassell website, and some of them make my stomach turn. I'm absolutely not okay with some of the things, especially the part to remember to clean your history after visiting this site, that alarms me greatly. The whole love is respect.org does not seem like something that we want to have any part of, and I also want to explain, though, that there is a process that we need to follow because you can imagine if the chaos that would ensue if we did not have a process. So I'm going to outline the process that's coming up. On Saturday, September 18th, we will host an opportunity for families to view all materials, including those from the online portal. People can stop by anytime between 9:00 and 10:00 a.m. at the Education Service Center. On October 5th, the curriculum committee will review feedback and potential revisions, which will then be brought to the full school board for additional review. We cannot take action on anything unless it's in the agenda as an action item because the agenda gets posted to the public, and the public needs, the entire public needs to know when exactly we are taking action on anything. The board will formally review and take action regarding social and emotional learning as they would with other curriculum used within the district. If the curriculum committee moves the work forward from the October 5th meeting, it would be presented and discussed at the full board meeting on October 11th. Action could be taken at the following school board meeting on October 5th. I do have a concern that this is over a month away, and I would like to find a way to temporarily suspend SEL while we while we dig deeper, because this product is not as it was sold to me.
Toni, just to clarify, your timeline, October 11th, and the next meeting is October 25th, correct?
Reviewing can happen this Saturday, September 8th. The next, I'm sorry, September 18th. The next scheduled curriculum meeting is October 5th. We could definitely move that forward.
But if we follow that schedule, then October 11th is the first official board discussion, and then the first board action date would be October 25th?
Yes, because we have to have a discussion on a regularly-scheduled school board meeting before we have an action in a subsequent school board meeting. We can't just wave a magic wand and make everything disappear, even if we would like to. So I, superintendent and assistant superintendent, I would like us to find a way to schedule the curriculum meeting sooner and make that announcement public so anyone who cares to, unfortunately, there's no public comment at the curriculum committee meetings, but you may attend and be present or watch them on video.
Just to respond to the scheduling piece, that committee meeting can be scheduled, it's just you and Erin Dove who are members, so we can look at that. We would want to, I would want to keep our commitment to families on Saturday to hear that feedback and have time to put together a response to that, to make sure we're in intention to some of those concerns that have been expressed, so we can work with them.
some of those concerns that have been expressed. So we can work with you to schedule that piece.
Okay, thank you.
Superintendent, I have a couple of questions, and I don't think I'm out of line on our agenda, because I think our agenda topic on this one is SEL. And if I'm wrong, cut me off, because I don't want to be in violation of our posted agenda. But I really appreciate everyone being here tonight, and several concerns were raised. And kind of like Toni, I'm at a point now where I don't know what to believe, because, you know, I'm told that this love is kind.org is not something that our students can access, yet there were people who talked about the copyrights and saying that you cannot edit. So I guess my question is, you know, how do we see this ending? Are we, I know some in the crowd talked about get it out of Badger. Well, and then some talked about an emergency meeting and get it out altogether. Are you hoping for feedback on September 18th for certain sections to remove, yet we still keep the good stuff that SEL has to offer? Or, you know, how do you, how do you see that, I guess, piece going?
I can just speak to the committee meeting that we held and the process that we had laid out, where we looked at, again, you don't have to be present on the 18th or post the 18th to provide feedback. We're taking in all of that feedback. The more specific, the better around concerns. And, you know, there were some specific examples given tonight, just so that we can be in attention to review, revise, or recommend removal. And it could be partial lessons, part of lessons. It could be grade level. It could be any of those pieces. So specific feedback is helpful. And looking at calls, you know, that ranges from all, part, none, disorganization, that specific resource, all of those things. So we'd be open to all that feedback and synthesize it and take it back to the committee level for further discussion.
Toni mentioned that we're treating this now as a curriculum, so it will go through the process. And I'm all for sticking to process. It is also my understanding that SEL didn't start this year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So how long has SEL been in our school district?
It's been around in some form or fashion for approximately seven or so years using
Seven or so years.
Different resources.
Yeah.
Yep, you'll hear reference to a character ad, things like that, that I think the nature of the labels have evolved. But I think the important point, as you said, is to hear through committee update. There's no action that we can take in this agenda this evening. Just so as a point of order to remind you around that, we would just encourage, you know, if there's any lesson or anything that a family wants to opt out of, we would absolutely honor that. And then our committee, it sounds like there's interest in accelerating that. That puts us at the October board meeting to ensure that we've got that work done so that it's ready for the first meeting in October.
Seven years predates every single one of us up here on this stage. We aren't the ones who brought this into the district. Is that a correct statement?
It's 2020.
So did we vote on something in 2020 that I'm not familiar with?
No, we can, I think some of the pieces in the resources, and we talked about it at the curriculum committee meeting, was treating this now different. Sometimes it was used as a supplemental resource that counselors might use in lessons. And this is actually now, teachers are using it in many lessons, those pieces, so treating it differently as a curriculum. That's a response that the committee and the board is looking at so that it's formally approved.
Okay. But in terms of the phase in, did it start at the elementary level, and then in perhaps 2020, did it expand into the middle school realm?
I can look at and get that history and make sure we have that accessible and part of the website. So it's on there for everyone to see, and I can give you the different elements in that phase in, so everyone can view that.
And recognizing the broad concerns, but specifically Grade 8, I think it's Lesson 25, that speaks to love is respect. I'm assuming Lesson 25 would be a springtime type of component, right? It's not, it's not something that's going to be taught next week?
No, it is not in the lineup anytime soon, but also that's the video that we were making reference to that is blocked and not used.
Understood. But if my child gets that URL and they come on my computer at home, it's totally clear.
Right.
And that's, that's the concern.
Yep, and that's nothing that we share
Right.
From our teachers or
But my point is that the lesson is far enough out that we have some time to do what we need to do. And again, that lesson is not coming up next Tuesday.
I have some questions, unless Joel has more.
I'm good. Go ahead.
So, and I realize I'm totally putting you on the spot, but obviously the concerns are, you know, a lot of concerns going on. So if we're, parents are going to review materials on Saturday, should they choose, this is really an obscure question, how many SEL or whatever you want to call it, lessons are going to happen between now and Saturday for our students? Like, if I send my 11th grader to school tomorrow, where will they receive this type of information before Saturday?
There are none at the high school level.
Okay.
And they receive approximately one per week. Sometimes there's gaps in between those weeks. Every teacher principal should be communicating in advance. So, you know, they
So I guess my question is, if, I realize we can't take action. I understand there's a process. I don't always like processes. But question would be, why couldn't, why couldn't teachers at this point not teach a lesson and fill it with a different lesson until[977.13][977.13](applause) All right, all right, I'm not done. Until the board can look at this. I guess, I'm not, thanks, audience, but I'm trying to talk. So I'll appreciate you, and you can appreciate me. I listen to you, so please listen to me. Understand that. I'm trying to work for you. So what I'm trying to ask you is, can we not teach any of these lessons that are currently being up for review until after the review happens and until after the board has a chance to look at it? I'm not trying to disrupt what we do here, but I'm trying to offer a path that allows everyone to maybe walk out of this room a little happier than they came in.
We can look at that with our student services department principals, look at what was actually scheduled, what can be deferred. We'll look at the timeline with the curriculum committee, and then put out a presentation to our board and families that can be in attention to that you're looking for and seeking a delay, is what I'm understanding.
Again, I'm not trying to circumvent the good work that happens at the curriculum committee level. That's not what I'm trying to do here. What I'm trying to do is say, obviously, there needs to be some review. There's general concern out there. So is there a way, and I'm not suggesting in the end the way this is going to turn out, I'm just saying, can we delay the current lessons that are going to happen until the board and families have a chance to review it, and then the board, and it goes through the curriculum process, which is October, what did you say?
October 5th or sooner.
October 5th or sooner. So assuming curriculum could possibly get together before October 5th, I guess if curriculum committee establishes that there needs to be a swift change, I would assume board members would be willing to entertain that. I guess I, you know.
If you're asking a question to board members, I'm in favor of what Toni originally said of accelerating the process for the review.
I guess I'm in favor of also doing that, but what I'm more in favor of is trying to delay the current lessons that may be on the table that are upsetting to some until parents have a chance to review it all on the 18th, and then the curriculum committee can re-review after that.
If we look at the timeline of end of October, we're really talking about five lessons being delayed.
I'm in favor of that.
Not a showstopper. I'm in favor of that.
Yes.
So I just want to be really clear for our public, so they know and understand that you're following your actual process. We are not voting on any item. This was a discussion based on a curriculum committee, their path forward, looking at that, asking, can we delay the instruction? They're going to accelerate their next meeting. To do that, the board is ready, willing, and able. I know that you've reviewed the material as well, for potential, just making sure that you continue to stay informed. But you're ready, willing, and able to have discussion and potential action as early as that first board meeting in October in response to that and do that. So again, then I'm administratively not making a unilateral decision without authorization from the board to remove, revise, or do anything. I'm simply adjusting the timeline, which is something that we do manage. Everyone clear? I see a lot of head nodding, but that's keeping us from taking action when we shouldn't have. That's keeping all those pieces and accelerating out the timeline. So that is the course of action that we'll take. So I'll let you continue with your report.
The final thing is, in fact, I'm sure people might like some clarity. Our principals, teachers, or counselors will communicate with families in advance of lessons being taught, if lessons are being taught. If there's a topic you would rather cover with your child personally, you can choose to opt out your child for that lesson or lessons. Please contact the school principal to make this arrangement. Would you like to speak to that further about how, how parents, and what would replace it? Like, opting out is one thing, but then what?
So a lot of time right now in the interim, it was just, you know, time in the library. They can read book of choice, et cetera. Again, there has not been many lessons in our schools right now. We're just a couple days in to that. But our families have that opportunity with anything that's being taught. We always seek to partner and honor choice and stand aside when they prefer something to be taught in their home or reinforced there, or they're not comfortable with a topic, just as human growth was brought up tonight. So that's a process that we have for anything. Simply express that to principal. But again, right now, we're ceasing to slow down that timeline in response to being able to do due diligence on the work. So that's what we'll do. This concludes the curriculum committee meeting report.
Thank you, Toni, and thank you all for the discussion on that. Next report item is the policy committee, and we'll go over to Joel as the policy chair.
Yep. Policy has not met for a couple of weeks now. We have already accomplished quite a bit in our policy review calendar, but I will be getting with Mr. Fisher, Mr. Zweigert, and the superintendent to schedule our next policy committee meeting, which we'll be discussing and reviewing, and maybe potential changes to the 600 series policy. So we're right on track with where we need to be with our policy review calendar, and we'll be meeting soon.
All right. Thank you, Joel. So at this point, we've hit the major items that address the topics that were presented this evening. If you feel the need to leave, you're certainly welcome to. Otherwise, you can continue. We've got a couple of discussion items, and then we head into the home stretch. So if you're heading out, thank you again for your being here and your comments this evening. We have two discussion items this evening, 2022 health and dental insurance programs. So to take us through both of those items, Director of Human Resources, Lenny Hanson.
Thank you very much, members of the board. I'll just wait a minute, because I know some members of our public are going to clear out here, so we'll just get things set up while they move over.
Although you might want to know how the insurance gets spent in our district, I think is interesting. Thank you, Lenny.
So I do have a lot of what I think is good news in terms of the management that we've been able to do around insurance costs. But that starts most of all with the whole purpose of why we carry insurance. And the stat I want to lead off with is 5.2%. 5.2% is our teacher turnover rate this year, which is one of the best in the entire southeast Wisconsin region. You know, turnover is a result of a number of different factors in terms of compensation, total rewards, benefits, and employee engagement. But this expense, health and dental insurance, is a component of that, and we were very happy to see that once again for, I don't know how many consecutive years, our teacher turnover rate was, or our retention rate was far better than the regional average. So we want to continue to do good work on our benefits package to maintain that. So what I'm going to do tonight is do a brief review. I've done some more thorough ones in the past, especially as a number of our board members, when you were newer. But I think we've built a good understanding around kind of how our program is developed and designed. So hopefully I can hit on the big points and really highlight those for you without boring you to death about insurance. So first, I'm going to talk about the health insurance piece, and then I'll just kind of naturally segue into the dental piece. Obviously, health is a much more costly item, and health insurance for us comprises both our medical insurance as well as our pharmaceutical coverage. So one of the biggest questions that we get is what was the impact of the pandemic, or what, you know, the pandemic's not over, so what has the impact of COVID-19 been on our medical costs? And I tried to summarize some of the key points here for everyone. So we did see, you know, if I'm looking at that 2020 year, which is, you know, the year that we have complete data on, we operate our health insurance plan on a calendar year, so we have complete data, January to December 2020. We did see a reduction in claims, which I'm sure you have heard about, in just the fact that first, a lot of elective procedures were not possible during that year, as well as a number of people deferring care, either because of inconvenience or concern around the virus. So we saw about a 6% reduction in cost below what was projected for that year. The second point is a very good point for us, in that our rate of hospitalization of individuals on our plan was extremely low, which means the large-scale costs that you could have seen from the pandemic, we didn't experience those, fortunately, like some other places did, because for a large part, our employee base and their spouses and dependents remained healthy and free from, for the majority, serious COVID complications.
Hey, Jen, that door needs to remain open. We're in an open session. Can you open that for me, please? Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. One of the things we're watching for on the horizon, both this current year and into next year, is some catch-up of the deferred, deferred care. So we do know that a number of elective procedures were put off by individuals due to the pandemic. There is a projection that there's going to be some catch-up of that going on as people get back to, back to those procedures. And then the other side of the, the other concerning area that we want to watch around deferred preventative and deferred elective procedures is, are there procedures that people really probably should have had for their own health that didn't have them because of the pandemic that maybe won't get them? And is that a potential leading to, you know, larger costs down the road when those preventative pieces, you know, would have maybe caught something sooner? So that's a concern in general throughout the market that we'll be watching as we move into 2022. Our largest single COVID-19-related cost was testing, easily. Not only the testing, but actually, in a lot of places, the testing required an office visit referral just to get the test. And even though it might have been a three-minute virtual visit, the medical providers are real good at making sure that that counts as a full office visit, so they can bill it that way. One way we deferred that cost is with our relationship with Freder as our clinic provider. So our clinic was able to provide a lot of those referrals, which then are of no cost to the employee and no additional cost to the district. So the fact that we switched to Freder when we did for our clinic service, I would say saved us quite a bit of money in terms of those office visit referrals. We do expect for costs to return back to normal more in 2021, as our broker kind of looks at the whole regional approach. So some of the key cost control strategies that we had in place, and some of these are longer-term, that we've had in place for a while, some of them are more recent. So I highlight a couple of, the two biggest ones at the top that we really took on during 2020 that really yielded amazing results for us. The first was that move to the Freder clinic. We changed vendors, moved our clinic off of our, out of our facility and right into the brand-new, beautiful Westman Health Center that Freder has on Paradise Drive. That reduced the cost of the clinic by several hundred thousand dollars, which was a win to begin with. But then, when we took some time and analyzed the rate of usage for emergency and urgent care visits by our employees, we continued to see that our employees are way below the norm in terms of that usage of emergency and urgent care. In fact, the number I, the way I came up with this number of how much the clinic has saved us, $392,000, is basically if, for our size of an organization, if we were just using emergency care and urgent care at the typical rate, that totally average rate for the Wisconsin region, that's how much more it would have cost. Our ER and urgent care visits are so many fewer than the norm that truly the clinic is paying for itself. And the reason they're below that norm is the clinic, that people can get in for free healthcare opportunities and not have to take visits that are far more expensive. So, big win. Under the prior vendor, that number would not have paid for the clinic for itself. The clinic is truly not just paying for itself, but actually, I don't want to call it a net profit, but it's actually in the black, which is certainly not something you expect of an additional service you're providing. So, a big win strategically for us. The second one that was a big switch for 2020 is we switched pharmaceutical carriers from Express Scripts over to Optum RX for our pharmaceutical needs for employees through the health plan. Huge savings. It reduced our pharmaceutical spend by 24.8%. There are very few things you can do in the health insurance market, aside from changing There are very few things you can do in the health insurance market, aside from changing your plan design, that are going to suddenly save you that kind of money. So a, a big win for us. You know, you know, we did last year, as you recall, when, when I brought forth to you the employee premiums, we did raise employee premiums a little bit more than normal last year. And, and, you know, there was a lot of discussion about that. But to put that number in perspective, that $599,000, to, to make up that amount of money to, a revenue for the health plan, I, I would have to raise employee premiums by more than 50%. I mean, that's the amount of savings, and, and so it's a win for everybody, right? It's a win for our employees that we can maintain decent premiums. It's a win for the district, and it's a win for our kids, because that's $599,000 that we can spend on additional supports in the classroom. Some of the other items here I list are some pieces that, some of them existed for a while. So, you know, we do try to incentivize consumerism in our, in our medical plan through a variety of tools that you see there, our health reimbursement account, which has a generous rollover opportunity. We have three different plan designs that employees can choose from to, again, make the right decision that makes consumerism sense for themselves. And then we have a number of wellness-related premium reduction opportunities as well. Again, when our employees are well, we're well, right? The plan is well when employees are well. So everything we can do to encourage that is great. And then I list some of the other supplementary programs we have. We do a great job in terms of our metrics on catching, early detection of breast cancer, and a lot of that is due to the work we do bringing in a mobile mammogram service. We have a number of pharmacy incentives. This past year, we added a discounted price for retail clinic services, so some, some places that you might see in different stores and things like that where employees can go. We provide flu shots. And then, as you recall, last year, or for this year, actually, the board approved our adding of a significantly enhanced employee assistance program, which has seen exceptional amount of usage, roughly 12%, which is well above the norm, which is great, because that's a free service for employees where they can often get all kinds of needs addressed, at least at the, the outset of when those needs present themselves, and it's especially helpful for behavioral health needs. So as we move forward into the new year, how do, you know, how do we continue to make some wise choices, continue to, to drive the dollar figure in the right direction? We will be adding this month an additional benefit for free access to FastCare clinic services for our employees. So FastCare is a clinic service that you find provided by Frehder in all of the Meyer stores throughout southeast Wisconsin. This is a win-win. So the district gets a discount by, by contracting with Frehder. We get a discount on FastCare services. The employee gets a win because it is free for them to use it, and the, the biggest win is that FastCare's open seven days a week. So now, in addition to our clinic, this will provide another very low-cost option for our employees and their families late at night, Saturdays, Sundays. Tani?
Can they ac- can our employees access those at the Meyers around, all the Meyers? So in case, like, it's, like you said, it's a weekend, and they're at like a soccer game down in Racine or something, can they visit that?
Yep. There are six Meyer, Meyer stores throughout southeast Wisconsin that have a FastCare clinic in them, including the West Bend one right here, and all of those are available. Any, any FastCare clinic is available. So yeah, you're absolutely right. I mean, while the majority of our employees, you know, this West Bend one is probably the closest, there's a number of them that live in other communities that can take advantage of that as well. So that's a great benefit as well, especially when you think about, it's not just for the employee, but anybody on the plan can access as well, you know? Even though the employee's driving up to West Bend every day, their spouse might not be, their kids are, may not be here. So another great benefit that we think is going to even further improve that deferred ER and urgent care number that is already looking really good. We did, did a survey and did a deep dive into the usage of our clinic and adjusted our clinic hours to, to hopefully even get, get even better usage out of it, and then also adjusted them to kind of partner with this arrangement we're going to have with FastCare. Really, we just want to provide as many hours in a week as we can of a, a low-cost opportunity for people to get access to those services. We are currently on the lookout for a, a new company to contract with for lower-cost MRI services. We, for a long time, had a relationship with SmartChoice MRI that we provided an incentive to employees and then also received a, a great price on MRIs. The pandemic, the, the realities of that financially put SmartChoice MRI out of business nationwide. So we're on the lookout for a new partner there, but that was a great win for us for quite a while, so we'll, we'll be researching that. We made an adjustment to our stop-loss insurance plan to reduce some somewhat unlikely but still possible risks to the district, so we think that provides some additional protection as well, which is a wise financial decision. Last year, I talked about the need to have a staff benefits committee to help us make decisions, not just on health insurance, but all benefits approaches. The pandemic slowed our ability to get that going, but we are about to launch that finally now, so we will be using that staff input to make some future decisions, especially as we really dig in deep to determine, are we incentivizing consumerism in the way that we really, really need to? We haven't had significant plan design changes in several years, and I think it's a good time for us to really go to our employees and say, hey, all these, you know, levers that we have to pull on the insurance plan, are they, are they working for you? Are they, are they incentivizing the best choices? And, and so we are going to get that going very shortly, so that we can get that staff input on a number of these pieces. And then, as a normal part of our cycle, next year, we'll be reviewing our UMR network. It's something we review every, every few years, like any other vendor that we use. So we use UMR, which is part of the United Choice Plus Network, as our delivery mechanism for our health. They manage our medical claims. They've been doing a great job for us, but it is coming up time for us to do our normal review of that, to make sure that's the best dollar-for-dollar value that we can deliver. So we'll conduct that review during 2022 as well. So as we look forward for the, for the next year, we, we had a positive year in terms of performance. That doesn't mean that there's no cost, obviously, to healthcare. The regional trend is still a 6% to 8% increase in medical claims expected for 2022. Due to some of the great decisions we've made, our expected increase in cost is supposed to, is targeted to be below that at roughly 5.5% to 6%. And therefore, you know, all we're going to talk about today is a premium adjustment to simply maintain pace with that. So last year, one of our big drivers we talked about was returning to that 90-10 cost share percentage of employer versus employee cost share over medical benefits, and that, that led to a little bit larger-than-normal premium increase at that time. I'm happy to report that we, the adjustment we made last year got us right in line with where we wanted to be. So we got it back to that 90-10 share, so our goal is to maintain that for another year. I have a quick review here, just so you have a reminder of kind of how our health, health plan is designed. We have three different plans, basically, you know, high premium, low deductible, middle of the road, and then the opposite, low premium, high deductibles, so that employees can make the best choice for themselves based on the, the typical health of their family. Yeah, participation-wise, that middle-of-the-road plan is by far the, the most popular plan that we have. Plan one is the high premium, low deductible. It's, it's easily our lowest participating plan, but at the same time, for a lot of people, it's the right fit, and, and there's reason to continue offering it, even though our participation is lower on that one. So when I get to the, the meat of tonight's conversation, so our, in your board docs, you'll see the proposed premium increases. It's generally about a between a 5% and 6% increase from, in each category. Overall, it ends up being about a 5.61% increase in total premium revenue that would go up. Again, the only targeted goal here is to simply maintain pace with what we're expecting medical claim costs to increase by. It'll maintain that 90-10 share, ensure that we don't fall behind and lose that cost share as we did, you know, over the course of a few years in the past. This allows us to maintain our plan design and this, as being exactly the same for, I believe, a fourth consecutive year, which obviously our employees really appreciate that predictability, that we're not changing, you know, what doctors they, they, you know, fall in the network, or any of the deductibles or pieces like that. So that, that's our goal here, is to maintain some consistency. And then it's also important for us to maintain the ratio between plans in terms of employee versus an employee plus spouse, so that from Plan one to two to three, they are, they really should have a consistent relation between them. So these adjustments allow us to continue to do that. So I won't click on the link, well, I can click on the link here, at least in case you have questions about the, this isn't my computer, so let me make sure it just opens up correctly. All right. About the increases we're looking at, so I guess I, I always like to first, I've got these organized by plan, but I always like to first point at Plan two, family, because that's easily our most popular plan. So Plan two, family, the monthly premium, it looks at an increase of $11 per month. So that is the one that would affect the most, the most employees, and just to give you a perspective on the, kind of the size of increase that we're looking at. In Plan one, you see the largest increases, but that's because that is that high premium plan. So on a percentage basis, it's always going to have the largest increases. And then Plan three, you can see very small increases. Again, that's that low premium, high deductible plan, you know, attractive for individuals who kind of say, I never go to the doctor, or we're a healthy family, we never, we never need to use that. Mr. Smith?
These are out-of-pocket costs for the employees. Is there a part that shows what part is paid for by the district?
So we have employer premium contributions. We have those as well. I could bring that chart. I could provide that next time, so you see the, the difference. But yeah, it generally falls in that 90% to 10%. So if this is 10%, you can generally find close to a 90% when you look at those comparables, for sure.
I just, I, I look at these numbers, and I, I think it's so reasonably priced, and I, I want to make sure everyone knows that that's not what it actually costs.
Nope. So we have our premium, premium equivalency chart, because we use that for determining things like COBRA costs and things like that. So, you know, our average, like I said, our most popular plan is that family plan, which goes to $219 per month. You can do a quick Google search, and you'll find that the average employee premium on, in the state of Wisconsin, private-public sector combined, is, you know, close to 500 per month, right? It's a good benefit. It's, it, that, that's, but again, when I come back to that statistic I started, cited at the beginning, 5.2% retention, we want that. We want our employees to be here, we want them to feel that this is a safe place, that they can make a career out of, and, and having really strong health benefits is one way that we accomplish that. Jump back over here. So that's a quick summary, as quick as I can go. I know I can be a little wordy here. Everyone smiles a little bit at me about that, but I like to give you the story as best I can. But any further questions around medical premiums and, and plan for 2022 before I go into dental?
Appreciate the throw in, Sleni. Any questions?
Good work, as usual. Thank you.
I'll just make one comment. As you said, this is one of the budget items that was coming in even under budget last, last year because of many things that you talked about. Things that were, were invested in, you, you even mentioned, just to even clarify, we've invested more in teacher face-to-face time with kids left behind because of virtual schooling and homeschooling. We invested more in that with our, with our savings. We also put a big chunk for debt savings, to, to the tune of, we're probably, and we've saved $8 million to pay off our debt that we have sitting in the bank to pay off. And a plug for our annual meeting in two weeks, Andy will go through all those numbers and how all these budgetary items affect our overall budget. That's September 27th, right back here, and we'll, we'll go over it. But I'm proud that we saved money here. Thanks, Lenny, for sharing it. We're using it for good causes, teaching our kids and debt diffusions, and just another plug, we're one of the lowest debt school districts in the county, so we're very conscious of where we spend the money. We know we have to invest in the future, but thanks for the report, Lenny.
Thank you. I mean, Mr. Sarno is our debt expert, so I can't speak too much to that, but what I can say is, as you, as you alluded to, we have one of the lowest per pupil spending numbers in the area. We have one of the lowest, if not the lowest, mil rate in the area, and yet, we're able to maintain a compen- a total compensation package for employees that delivers amazing teacher retention. So yes, we're, we're doing our best to, to use our resources well, and the data shows that we're successful at that. All right. Then I'm ready to move on to topic number two, which is a brief one, which is dental insurance. So again, kind of coming back, what was the impact of dental, of COVID-19 on our dental insurance? So as you probably heard, it had a huge impact on dental claims. You know, dentists basically shut down for a long period of time, and even after that, it was difficult to get in. There were fewer appointments. So we saw a, a significant, almost 25% reduction in expected, versus expected in terms of dental claims. That is already in 2021, returning right back to normal, so people are catching, people are getting back to their visits. The difference is that compared to medical care, there isn't so much, there isn't so much of a risk of like a catch-up increase cost, right? You can't make up the, the, the annual dental checkups that you missed last year, right? So we probably won't see so much of a catch-up or a, a, a problem in that way, but it does look like pretty much everything's coming back to where we would have expected it in the past. So it was kind of a one-year blip that now we've moved past. Brief highlight of how, how our dental plan is structured. We have a three-tiered system that incentivizes our, our PPO network highly, and then there's a mid-level network that the employee pays a little more for if they really want to use that network, and then we have an, a third out-of-network option that the employee would pay even more for. So again, some choices for people. We're not limiting options, but certainly we're trying to encourage consumerism and drive people towards the providers that provide the most economical service for us. We will be reviewing the reimbursement levels for each of those tiers, and if, for, during 2022, we'll really be looking at, are we appropriately incentivizing consumerism enough between those three levels? You know, should we be differentiating to a greater degree? So we'll dig into that and spend some time analyzing that in the coming year. We, once again, have really done a nice job in terms of dental plan design and controlling costs, that there is no cost increase expected for 2022 versus what we have budgeted in 2021. I'm extremely proud to say that this is the seventh consecutive year we can say we have not, we do not have a projected increase in premiums for employees because of how successful we've been in creating a, a, a good sense of consumerism in our dental plan. And therefore, since there is no increase on the horizon, as far as we can see, we are proposing to keep our premium rates flat once again in dental. Any questions around dental insurance for this year?
Lenny, is that a data point that you have the ability to drill into, again, you know, regionally or statewide in terms of, you know, are we an outlier at seven years of, of no increases, or is, is that kind of the norm?
I wouldn't say it's the norm. I would say, in general, dental coverage has become a much more competitive market, which works in our favor. But I wouldn't say it's the norm. Seven years is not, not the norm to be able to keep premiums at that level for that period of time. It's a little harder for me to get my hands on comparable dental information, aside from just asking some of our neighbors. The, the state does have a report for all districts throughout the state on their medical plan design, but dental's a little bit more behind the scenes. They don't collect so much data on that. But I would say, in general, people are having good dental years for a few years in a row. Seven years in a row of no premium increases, I would say we've had an exceptionally good streak.
Thank you. Other questions? So again, these are discussion items tonight. I'm assuming then at the next board meeting, the, the next regular one, the one that Kurt alluded to, the 27th, in two weeks, is our annual meeting. So the first meeting in October, we'll have action items on these?
October 11th, we plan to bring this back for action. That gives us enough time then, if the premiums are approved then, to get things ready for open enrollment in November.
Okay. Last call for questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are coming into the home stretch. So future agenda items, our board meeting calendar, again, Kurt gave the plug for the annual meeting in two weeks, September 27th. That will be back here. Timing on that superintendent is, there is, I'm pulling up the link here now, I believe. We have a meeting at 6:30, and then the official meeting starts at 7:00.
You can register as early as 6:00 PM, and then the, the meetings follow thereafter.
Okay. So not our normal 5:30 meeting time, 6:30, and then for the, the pre-meeting, and then the official meeting begins at 7:00, we'll be here at 6:00. The other meeting then would be on October 11th and October 25th, as scheduled right now. Those are regular board meetings. Upcoming committee meetings, as Tani mentioned, right now, curriculum committee is scheduled for October 5th, and we are working to move that up and, and expedite. So stay tuned on where that ultimately settles out at. Any items for follow-up and communication for the board? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Thank you, Nancy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Any discussion on adjourning? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? We are adjourned. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening.